We have invocation tonight from Perry Baptist Church, Adam Grass.
All right, well, let's pray. Lord, we do thank you for the opportunity to come together and freedom and democracy to see what's best for the city. I pray that as we do that, that, Lord, we would thank with the benefit of all in mind that we could have your wisdom and that decisions will be made and that would be best for the community and the best benefit for the citizens. Lord, we thank you for everything you do for us. We ask your blessing, Christ, and amen.
I think at seven o'clock, at least my new glasses tell me it is. So we will call the meeting to order and have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to my United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Craig Elliott, Mindy Galberty.
Here.
Adam Grass.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Terry Wood. All of the counterparts except council members Craig Elliott and Terry Wood. Both Craig and Terry did give us a call previously, one earlier this week and one today, to say they wouldn't be here. So I'm glad everybody else made it. We're looking for approval now of the agenda.
And would the agenda be adopted and printed? Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the agenda be approved. All those in favor?
Aye. Was that Lambert and Grass? I'm sorry.
Yes, Lambert and Grass. And now reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the January 21st, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
Then moved and seconded that we waive the, that we approve the minutes and waive the reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll jump down to pre-approved reports because we have time before it's time for the public hearing. Leland, would you like to say anything about your proposal or were you planning to do that?
I had planned to. Is there something you want me to say? I don't know.
What I'm asking Leland about, he had provided me with his suggestion to try to put something in the ordinance for zoning administration to give them some authority to follow through on residents who aren't complying with ordinances, be it signs or be it election signs or whatever the case may be. And we've sent out a request to the attorney, the city attorney, to give us an opinion on that, to find out what we can do. I did get one brief reply from him, but I've asked him some more questions, so we don't really have something substantiated from him yet. So we'll just keep that up in the air for now, I guess, until we hear from him. Okay? The next thing would be public comments, and we can go to that certainly. We don't start the public hearing until 7:15. So does anybody here have public comments they'd like to make other than regarding the special assessment hearing?
There's nobody raising their hand on Zoom either.
Nobody virtually either. Okay. You're making this a short meeting. We'll go to communications. Devin, do we have some?
I don't believe so. The only thing that I would make sure council received, the attorney information, there was a packet that was given to you. And that's all I have for tonight.
I would like just to raise one matter that's been troublesome for some time. Off and on, we have received in the mail letters from people who raise questions or concerns about things going on here in the government offices, but the letters have never been signed. They've never had a return address. So council is concerned about that. We'd like to be able to communicate with people if they have concerns. So I've been asked just to read this regarding those types of letters. If you have concerns about officials in our government offices, it's not only your right, but your duty to report it with evidence to support it and to identify yourself and provide options for response. Thank you. It's also been suggested through an email to me that perhaps every month we offer a open town meeting kind of discussion time. Council, what would you think about the idea of having an old-fashioned town hall meeting for, say, 30 minutes prior to the second meeting every month? So we would gather at 6:30. Anyone from the community could then come, ask questions, ask for discussion regarding anything. We wouldn't put any limit on the time for that discussion, but we would end at five minutes to seven, have our invocation, and then go ahead with the meeting. What are your thoughts on that?
I think it's a good thought.
I'm wide open to give it a try. Let's see what we go.
If it gathers a lot of interest and we have a lot of people who come, we could always expand the time, you know, and start earlier. But I think starting at 6:30 is a good place to begin. What do you think, Adam? What do you think, Bob?
I'm not opposed to it, but they have public comment already in the city council. So I don't want it to become a, come in here and yell at us for 30 minutes. I can put a timeline on it that that's may what it may end up being. But I'm all for openness and getting people here and interacting with their community government. As long as we're going to work for them if they come in and talk to us. Communicating other ways, email, email, whatever, phone.
We do have the technology committee working on other ideas for communication, but we can try this. It won't be written in stone, so if it doesn't work out, we'll just stop. So we might lay some ground rules, but rudeness and shouting accusations without evidence, that kind of stuff won't be tolerated. So, okay? So we will start with that next meeting. So we'll gather at 6:30 for an open town hall.
Just note, we don't have a full council, so you'll be served that information for the special, if we consider it a special. So I believe I'll be able to comply with your packets because it's the same day, but I'll verify that.
Do you actually have to have a special meeting today?
You're having a court. And you're asking people to talk about subjects in the city, so you are discussing city business that you're opening up to the public. So I'd rather be safe than sorry.
I agree.
John, do you think you can do your report in five minutes? You want to try?
So we're dealing with the ordinance of the Orchard Street?
Yeah.
Is that the one? Okay. So we, I don't know what all information you guys have seen, but historically what we had done in the past, when, you know, buildings were demolished or just prior to them, the services had to be disconnected physically from the city's service. So the service lines would remain and they would have to continue paying the, what I call the ready-to-serve rate or the base rate. The question was posed to council since the house was uninhabitable and myself, and they weren't satisfied. That's why you guys got involved in that with this discussion. And it ended up going to the city attorney for a legal breakdown. We were not wrong in our interpretation, but we were not able to fully justify it in a court of law, I would say that. So they have now petitioned and asked for a disconnect or to be capped. They will not have to pay the benefit charge. We were, because if you follow the ordinance as a flow chart, but certain ordinances or certain provisions didn't, they went from one to the next, but they didn't go to the next one to do that. So they will end up having to pay, you know, any connection fees that we would incur, new water meters, that type of stuff, and any of the components on the city side in addition, and then they would have to reconnect and pay for it from that point. Wherever it's terminated, it doesn't always necessarily end in the right of way. Typically, the water does. The sewer, we mark it, stake it, note the location of its last known disconnect. So if that clears things somewhat without...
And this is in regard to the Frish's, Alan and Shawna Frish, who wrote us a letter that we discussed last week. We asked John to look into that. John, Mindy, and I met and talked about it and decided to ask the attorney to interpret that.
Correct.
Ruling because it was a little bit vague.
Typically, the reason why we would go all the way back to a complete disconnect is normally when a building's tore down and they don't give me, or Public Works, a timeframe that they don't intend on rebuilding. There has been instances where they wanted, they asked for a permanent disconnect. We went back to the main and as far back as possible and terminated the sewer leads. I'm not going to dig up the road and end the Y there, so it was left in the right of way. We still have the addresses, the markings for any future misdig situations, so that doesn't get bored into or hit. We will still mark it, but so that's...
Any questions for John about that or any other questions regarding that interpretation from the attorney? If not, I'll go ahead and sign the letter that the attorney has sent us and will send in the mail to the Frish's tomorrow. It's now 7:15, and we will move ahead to public hearing regarding the special assessment for ambulance service. And Fire Chief Guy Hubbard's here. He will answer any questions or at least be available to answer any questions that anyone might have. This is a hearing. You're welcome to step to the podium and ask a question, make a statement, anything regarding that special assessment for ambulance service. Yes, please tell us your name and where you live.
My name is Stephen Wallace. I live on 431 Northeast Street here in Perry. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the special assessment to recover cost for the ambulance service. During this troubled time with the pandemic, you're asking many people to sacrifice even more with a special tax. Don't burden our residents. It does not appear to me that this is, council's being transparent to our residents. First of all, the cost of this special assessment is not listed on the letter that was sent to the residents. It does say that you come to City Hall to see it. It's not on the website either, the city's website. This should be brought to the vote of the people at an election. They did it in, I believe, Weberville this year or this last year, and it passed. The assessment should have a date certain to end instead of being reoccurring. By re-incurring an increase at about 10%, in 10 or 15 years, the fire and ambulance service will have a better revenue than the city of Perry. I'd also like to know about private ambulance services. Lansing Mason, Lansing Mercy, MMR, they make a profit and they're sustainable. The first thing you see when you go to the fire department's website is how to pay your ambulance bill. I ask and urge the city council to take a step back, reassess, and put a millage request on a ballot in front of the people. Let them decide if they can afford or wish to fund this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Anybody else have any comments related to the ambulance special assessment?
My name is Jeremiah Sayer, 503 Perry Lake Drive, right here in town. Fairly new resident to the city of Perry, four years in the city. When we purchased our home, I realized the taxes were a bit high considering the infrastructure that I see around. I work in an infrastructure department. I know quite a little bit about it. Also know a little bit about the cost of maintenance and the cost of services. Came from a very small town in northern Michigan. I kind of understand how things operate and run. Although my wife and I were committed, we really love the community, love everything about the people here. Reminds me a lot of up north, but I'm not there. To be honest with you, I pay probably some of the highest taxes in the city of Perry. I've done my homework. I came to the Board of Appeals this past year, was given a very clear explanation of why, which I'm agreeing with. I can't afford anymore though, and I feel like a lot of our residents are probably in a similar boat. Just as Mr. Wallace said, I second that opinion that we should go to a vote and we should allow our Perry residents to decide that. I think the ambulance service is incredibly important. I would never want to lose it. I feel like most of the residents here feel the same, and we'd probably step up and do what was necessary. But I couldn't agree more with Mr. Wallace. This is not transparent at all. I don't even know what 10% of anything is. Is it 10% of a million? Is it 10% of $10? I have no clue and no way to find out. And it's not clear in this letter how I would find out, and it's not also clear in this letter when it's going to happen. So we have to understand, you know, as city council members and people that deal with this all the time, the general population doesn't. And I'm part of that general population, and I'm a younger person, and I want to know where my money's going. I really want to stay in this town, but if I'm going to pay the taxes I pay, I'll move closer to Lansing. And I feel like a lot of people will. There's not jobs here. We drive one way or the other. We've moved out here to get away and really hate to have to move closer. I know this is, you know, the ball's rolling in a direction where we're all being nickel and dime for everything. Our gas bills, our white bills, and I know that's not the problem of this community, but it's a problem for all of us. We have to stop at some point, reassess, and make sure we're doing what's best for our community, to stay a small community. Otherwise, it's not going to go well for us, I don't believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Guy, have you got some information for us?
Can I take this off or should I leave it on? Anybody else want me to get this off? Anyone?
I think you're six feet away.
I'm six feet away from everybody. You should have asked.
My name is Guy Hubbard. I'm the emergency services chief of Perry Fire Rescue Southwest Chi-Was, Emergency Services Alliance, whatever. The city of Perry and all municipalities that we cover are paying $45 per unit. Now, a unit is a household or an apartment, or a business is one unit for every five full-time employees. So McDonald's probably pays for three units or whatever. I don't know. And that's a calculation by the city clerk or the city treasurer. I'm not sure which one who does that, but... And we're proposing going to $65 per unit, so it's a $20 increase. The, I shouldn't take notes while the two of you are speaking because I understand your concerns. I live in the city too. So the 10%, potential increase of 10% per year has always been a part of the assessment. And the assessment for the city of Perry went from $30 to $45 in 2001, and we've kept it that way. We started in 2005. The previous service that covered the city of Perry was PMSA. They were, I guess you'd call them partially private ambulance companies, Perry Morris Chesworth Ambulance. They collected 30, they requested to go to 45, and they did, for all the municipalities again. And when we started in January 2005, we kept it that way. So it's been $45 per unit for 20 years. And we just can't sustain that anymore because trying to find a paramedic these days, right now, a paramedic starts out at $14 an hour, and that's to save somebody's life potentially, give drugs like doctors do and nurses do. They're just not doing it anymore. People are saying, I don't want to be in a paramedic anymore. And most paramedics are in nursing school to go on to the next step or even physical or anything else in the medical field besides a paramedic. So that's been a challenge, so we have to offer more money. We did get, I think it was like $13.50 an hour, and over the last 18 months, I shouldn't have said 14. I think they're $14.50 an hour to start a paramedic. And then the raises go up. I think our top medic's been there for 12 years. I want to guess he's right around 17 an hour, something like that, so he's not making very much money. And I shouldn't say that. It's a fair amount for what the industry standard is. That's the bottom line. The EMTs make even less than that. And just coincidentally, not that this really is a concern to the residents, but we do have all state-of-the-art equipment. Unfortunately, a lot of it has to be replaced. We have to buy three heart monitors. Those are $30,000 apiece. And I just had this meeting yesterday. I just got the bid yesterday, so that's why I have this. We have to buy two new COTTS at $17,000 apiece. AEDs, the heart monitors, are the automatic external defibrillator. There's one here in City Hall. That has to be replaced, by the way. Those are before February of next year. They aren't recognized anymore. You will be able to buy pads for them anymore, batteries. Those are $1,600 apiece. I can get a city one at that price. You wouldn't be able to buy yourself that. But we have five of those. The city needs, you know, the school has them. We might be able to squeeze something with the school. I'm not sure we'll accommodate them. We'll see. And then a CPR machine that does automatic CPR. It's just basically, I got a bid yesterday for $180,000 for equipment. Health insurance in 2000, Obamacare took over, and our health insurance skyrocketed. I'm sure that some of you know that, and again, we've been able to keep that $45 even through those times. In 2008, we got hit hard because of the recession. That was about the time Obamacare took off. Obamacare was way after that, but anyway, we took a pretty big hit then. Now, the $45 wasn't affected, but our millage for fire was. We collect a millage for fire and the assessment for ambulance, then money is kept completely separate. The fire, we covered just the city of Perry, Perry Township, portion of Bennetton Township, and a portion of Antrim Township. And everybody pays the same millage. So I get, you know, it's an increase in taxes. It's $20 a year. One to make the point about the 10% increase is potentially can do that. The city has the right to do that based on the special hearing. I think you probably just took the paperwork from 2000 and just changed it a little bit, but we never took advantage of that 10% throughout those 20 years. So I don't suspect we will this time either. And Mr. Wallace, you used to be the mayor. That's right. Okay, okay. I've lived in Perry my whole life, so I know everybody. But, oh, when you go to our website and ask what paying your ambulance bill, that is, it's the unfortunate beast. Our budget for ambulance is about $1.4 million, and just a little over half of that is the assessments. We cover about 12,000 households total and three stations. And what we do for what we call residents would be anyone that pays this assessment. The communities pay, but they collect however they want. They could go to a vote. Doesn't make any difference to us how you collect money. All of them are by assessment like this though, as an example. And that would be, I know I forgot somebody, Vernon Township, Vernors Township, Antrim Township, Perry Township, city of Perry, Village of Morris, three quarters of Bennetton Township.
Didn't you just get Durant?
Straight to city of Durant. There's somebody else in there, I'm sure. But anyway, that would include our, that's our 12,000 households. About 200 square miles we cover. And those also brought up private EMS. That's a great thing, because that's real. We just started servicing the city of Durant because they got tired of the private EMS and their, I'll say it, shenanigans. They do pay somewhat better, but they also bill more. If you're a resident, this is where I was getting at, if you're a resident within our community that we cover and you are unable to pay your balance of the ambulance bill, first thing goes to the insurance company. Insurance company pays whatever, if you have a deductible or copay or whatever the case is, and you're unable to pay that. You call us, you tell us I can't pay it, we just write it off. Now, if it's somebody that lives in Lansing or outside of our coverage area, even in the city of Durant until recently, and you couldn't pay your bill for whatever reason, didn't matter, you're saying you collections. So that's what the money gets you, I guess. That's a good thing. And we also try to take care of the seniors, very much so. We take care of them, make sure that they... I really don't like sending anything to the seniors as far as billing goes. I don't think that they should have to pay for their medications or doctors. I don't think, but that's just me. Maybe it's because I'm getting closer to be that, in that category. I don't know. I guess that's pretty much, I had, you know, some, I just, I started writing down here, so I didn't have a whole lot prepared. But we'll get about $780,000 with the 12,000 households. And that'll be a little over half our budget. The other half is questions from insurance companies.
How many ambulances do you have?
We have four ambulances, three stations. We have a station here in Perry, a station in Vernon Township, and a station in the city of Durant.
What's your average response time to somebody, let's say, in the city of Perry?
Now, the city of Perry being so small, I'm gonna say our average response time is probably around three to five minutes.
And if we didn't have our ambulance service, this ambulance service, and somebody had to call Lansing, what's that response time?
Yeah, 20, probably 20, 30 minutes. I don't know. The way, and this is the downfall, this is what happened to PMSA. This is 20 some years ago. If you weren't here or don't remember, the city of Perry was one of the municipalities that PMSA covered. They weren't nearly as big as we are, but they covered several municipalities. The PMSA was somewhat private, but they had a city representative on their board, just like the city of Perry does. You have two representatives, actually. The city of Perry council said, "Okay, we want this person to be on your board." Well, they went to the meeting and the PMSA board and the rest of them said, "No, we don't want you." So they kicked it back. They couldn't get financial reports from PMSA, so the city pulled their money, and then PMSA said, "We're not covering the city." So the city of Wasco came down to Perry for about eight months, I want to say. And then they came to me one day, I think in September, and said, "Hey, we want you to start doing ambulance in the city of Perry, January 1st." So, you know, I just used to fight, used to put wet stuff on red stuff, now I'm gonna take people to hospital all of a sudden. But anyway, that's the history. So, the question about not paying the assessment, the household assessment, I will never, ever say we won't cover any municipality with our ambulance, even if you don't pay. That's not gonna happen. That's not the kind of service we provide. But we will be here every month, begging, 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 however it takes to get that money so that it's fair to the rest of the communities that pay the money. You can't do it for free here and charge over here, you know? Can't, you just can't do that. That's not, that's not right. So everyone is gonna be, is going to 65. I'm gonna take 100% blame, even though I have a board that I answer to, for it not raising slowly, like maybe that 10% a year for a few years, or maybe coming here five years ago, eight years ago, 10 years ago, and asking from 45 to 55, or 45 to 50. But I just never did that because, I think the city of Perry is the only one that ever calls me. The treasurer says, "Hey, we're gonna set our assessment. Is 45 still gonna be enough?" And of course, they asked me in like, May, and our budget year starts in January, so, like, "Yeah, sure, it'll be enough. It'll be enough." So we never increased it. So, but I should've been more aggressive with the board and said, "Hey, we need to raise this a little bit at a time." You know, $20 a year, I get it. $20 bucks a year, that's half a tank of gas. And soon it won't be, it'll be quarter tank of gas, but... But anyway, that's, I get that it's an increase, and it's gonna be a burden to some people, especially seniors, fixed income people. And right now, with the way things are going, the pandemic and not being able to work, and it's just, it's bad timing. But the pandemic has also affected us greatly. And there for three months, people just didn't want to go to the hospital. We'd go to their house, check them out, suggest they go to the hospital. They didn't want to go because that's where all the COVID guys were. And they didn't want to get COVID, so they didn't go. So that lowered our call volume, which lowers our revenue. Unfortunately, it's a two-sided, two-edged sword. If we don't have calls, we don't have revenue, and we don't have money. So we have to have, people have to get sick, people have to get hurt. That's just the bottom line. Other than maybe going to $100 per unit, then maybe we wouldn't have to ask so many calls. But I definitely don't want that to happen. And it will not happen. I doubt that it'll change from the $65 per unit in 10 years. I can't say that for sure, but I would assume that that's gonna get us caught up. It's gonna be able to get all of our equipment to where it's supposed to be. This heart monitor stuff, this came in, it's the same brand as what the city of Perry has for an AED. But this is the thing that can shock the patients, and I'm not a paramedic and EMT, so... Could've brought them with me. I play one sometimes at work, but... What they've done, the state, the federal government's actually said, "Okay, you have this monitor, you can't use it anymore starting February of 2022." Wait a minute. And we have three of them, so that's 100K right there. So, that's a big hit. And right now, they have zero financing for three years, so we're most likely gonna take advantage of all that stuff. And that happened yesterday. The $65 had been discussed for a year amongst our board, and we didn't even know that we were gonna have to buy all this stuff this year, so we needed the money besides just the new equipment purchases. So I hope that, you know, eases a little bit. Private ambulance company, I did talk a little bit about that, but there's no private ambulance in the company in the world that's gonna come and sit in the city of Perry. It costs about $430,000 a year to run an ambulance. And that's for staffing, ambulance equipment, supplies, all of those things, benefits. And the city of Perry generates, well, $45,000 right now. Because there's about 1,000 households in the city, or units, so it's $45,000 for that. And probably generates, I'm gonna say, 200 or 300 calls a year, times an average of, you know, the average around 400 per year, or per call. You're not even halfway. You're not even, you're about a quarter of the way to affording an ambulance by yourselves. I wish that, you know, it could be different, but it can't. I'm not saying we're the only game in town. But if a private ambulance company did come here, they wouldn't stay here. The city of Durant, they paid a private ambulance company, but the only reason that ambulance company did it is because they were right on the county line, and they went to Genesee County all the time. So they were paying for an ambulance to sit in the city of Durant, and that ambulance went to Genesee County more than it did in the city of Durant. So that's why they went out, they reached out to us, because we had one in Vernon Township, reached out to us and said, "Hey, can you cover us?" And to point out, I live in the city of Perry. That's everyone saying that here. What do I care what Durant does? Well, you do because of that supplies, they're helping to afford or pay for other ambulances. We have three now on the road 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If the Perry truck, or any of the trucks, go out to a call, then the truck that's in Durant or Vernon will come over here, or at least halfway here, to take the next call if it happens to be in the city. So you're actually getting three ambulances in the city, not sitting in the city all the time, but close. So them being, us partnering with all these other municipalities is a benefit to the city. It's a benefit to all of them, not just the city. That's, if anybody has any more questions. I appreciate your comments earlier.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Out of these 12 communities that we serve, how many?
How many 12? Is there really that many? You guys are gonna list it.
Out of those 12 communities we serve, how many of them are at the $65 rate right now?
Right now, the city of Durant is. And the others are all going about it however it is that they can because of their budget year, their assessment year. Right now, Berners Township is going through the same thing that you are. And they're gonna be online the same time you were online. When we went to, when, we just started Durant in August. So when I proposed, the city of Durant was the 65, knowing that you were gonna be shooting for that. So they're paying it already, but no one else is yet. Bennetton's on board. Everyone has, we're asking that everyone be paying that by January 1st of 2022. So that's the date that we're looking at. But no one else is yet. Vernon Township will probably be before that. Vernon Township's our biggest revenue. We get $126,600 a year from Vernon Township right now at 45. We get 45 from the city of Perry. I want to say Perry Township's like $80,000, something like that maybe, but...
If I could ask a question to council. Is it a big hurry that we do this special assessment, or can't we do this the right way and put it out of ballot?
Was that one question or two questions?
I think it was two.
I apologize.
12 communities, come on.
It's put out right now because it typically goes on the summer tax bill. And it has expired, so we wouldn't be able to put it on the summer tax bill unless it passes, unless we pass the special assessment. So it would go a year without any money.
Start collecting that.
And I'm not saying, I'm not responding affirmatively to your implication that that's the only correct way to do it. It's not, and you know that.
I know it's not the only way, but this is not very transparent to the residents of this.
There are several steps to this. This is only the beginning step. And so, I appreciate where they were saying it wasn't on the website. I'm following the protocol that we've always done, the way the attorney walks us through these special assessments. So the first part of it is, we ask our assessor to go through, add the $65 that was recommended, and that, how much the district would collect. It's $66,950. And then if, after the public hearing, if all agrees, there's a second public hearing that is held with more details, a list of exactly every unit that would be charged, how much if the public would want to view that. That will be available before the next public hearing. And in that, the following public hearing after it was done, then council resolves, they set how many years that would be applied to the special assessment. And that's what Mayor Hammond is talking about right now. This was a 10-year special assessment at 45, this last one, and is expiring. And so if you did, if there was a possibility that you planned on putting it to a vote, I believe the next election would be in August or November that would be available for a special. But the city would pay the whole cost for that election because it's our special, me, our...
Well, how much does that run through? I think people would hear how it's set. It's pretty expensive.
We're looking at, for the whole process, about $5,000.
Yeah, that's a waste of money.
You're talking about, you're not talking about special election. That's what he's asking, I think, right?
Yeah, we're talking about special election.
To call a special election by the city, it would cost the city about $5,000 to do it.
Should not have been for your...
No, that's all right.
I think, you know, obviously covering that, did you count Village Vernon? I forgot about that. In going through this, all of the other municipalities do it the same way. And the way I understand it, tonight's meeting is just to set up the district. That's it. And then from there would be the dollar amount fossil for approval. You know, like I said, I've been through this process several times with other communities, municipalities, so I know that that's how it works. The Village of Morris used to do it by millage, which is definitely not fair. Because they decided, okay, well, we need this much money because we have this many households, so we'll do it by vote by millage. So a guy that has a house like yours, you're gonna pay $150 a year for ambulance. And somebody that has a house that's, you know, taxable value of $20,000, they're only gonna pay $6, you know? So I don't think that's completely fair. The other reason why it's set by household or unit is because the farmer or the property owner, there's only two people living in that farmhouse, but he owns, you know, 500 acres. Put that on a taxable value, he's paying a lot of money for just two people, when the guy that lives across the road has a half an acre with two people and he's only paying, you know, very, very little. So, that's why household unit is a better way to do it, because it's more fair to everybody, no matter how big your house you live in, or how little the house is, or how many people live in the house. It does not, like I said, the apartment buildings is per apartment. Trailer park is per trailer. Businesses, I think, five full-time employees is a unit. Churches, schools, they don't get charged at all. I'm pretty sure we can't, not that I want to anyways, but... But it's just all about everybody paying equally, no matter what your circumstances are, I guess is the way. Well, I get a lot of questions like, "Well, I don't use the, I've never used it." Well, if we don't have this assessment, I've already said where our call volume is, and we would collect around $600,000. So that's all we would collect, and if we didn't have the assessment for household, we can't run the ambulance, so... If we said, "Okay, well, you've never used the ambulance. Here's your $45 back," we would never know how much money we need. Need to be able to budget ahead of time. Everybody understands that. But, and then the middle of your budget, you get an extra $20 a year, you know, that's not a good thing.
I have a question for you, Guy.
Yeah.
The 10%, it's 10% of the $65, so we're talking $6.50.
And then the next year, it'd be 10% of the $66.50.
Okay. So we can look at it a different way, and I appreciate both of you coming in. The reason I got on council or came is because I started coming to council meetings about a year and a half ago, and I wanted to get involved, so I came for the same reason, to deal about my taxes. But if you look at it, $45 for 20 years, or is it $20, it's a dollar a year? So I understand, I feel you're paying, believe me.
Right, right.
I do, but I look at it as, hopefully, God forbid, I don't need the service, but you never know. I might fall down the stairs and break my neck, and I need to come to my house. You know, my wife or my child or somebody, you know, so...
The best way to look at it is the insurance policy. That's what it really is. I mean, it ensures that you're gonna have the ambulance service available. It's not uncommon, or it's very uncommon now that we have three trucks, but if all three of our trucks are out, it's possible you might get a different ambulance service coming here. It's called mutual aid. We go to other districts. Not very often, just because they can cover their own area pretty well, but us in Wasco City, we do a lot of calls outside of our own municipality. They do more than we do, but, because, you know, we're pretty strong in staffing. I think we have a great program for retirement. The benefits, the insurance is what it is, you know? I get the same one. So we have some pretty good benefits. Wages aren't that great, but luckily, we have people to stay. Just had to hire five new people for the Durant truck, and, but again, Durant's paying for that. It's pretty much gonna break even with calls, and that's all we want to do, is just break even. We grow money over to buy new ambulances when we have to. An ambulance costs $160,000. Try to buy one every three or four years because they get a lot of miles on them. We go to Lansing, Flint, you know, sometimes down to Henry Ford and Wasco most of the time, but... So they get a lot of miles on, so we try to, we put money around toward that. So private companies have a lot of CEOs and people like that that make a lot of money. We don't have that. And another thing about the private versus municipal is the transparency. You want to see our budget? Here it is. The city council has two members on our board, but I think you also get a copy of the reports every month in the mail. That has every bill we paid, it has all our revenue, it has everything on it. So, complete transparency, because we're a municipality of our own, so we have to. We have to, and we are owned by the city of Perry and Perry Township. Sort of. To say owned, that's a stretch, but controlled by, is another way to say it.
Anybody else have questions for Guy? Or any comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, so I appreciate it, Guy. Thank you for your, $20 is a very small increase for what we're considering here.
Sure.
So thank you.
Yep. Well, I think it helps clarify a question about home, because you didn't know what you're paying out, probably.
Right. And so I put myself in the vote of most residents. And I think that, this is just a suggestion, right? If we're going to move this forward and more of our residents are gonna read this letter and agree to it, let's be transparent. Tell them what a unit costs. 12,000 units times $65 is what, $780,000, right?
Yep.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
That's the whole.
Right. But let them know that. Why should I have to go hunt for that information? You shouldn't. Be transparent. People will gladly pay.
And that's on, that's our annual budget, the number of households in the home, I mean.
Sure.
And anybody, just, mine, I was on the website, email, email me a request for our annual budget, and I'll forward it to you right away. But matter of fact.
I completely understand, but when I received the letter in the mail.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. I just got mine today.
I'm just saying.
I seriously.
It leads to trust, and it leads to the next time we have something of this nature to come up, the city of Perry residents will read things and they'll say, "I expect..." to come up, the city of Perry residents will read things and they'll say, I expect, I have an expectation of what it is. Right now, the expectation is, I have to come to city council at 7:15 and find out any more information. Otherwise, I'm just going to see an increase, and I don't know what it is. It's just a suggestion from a resident, but...
And we appreciate your suggestion, and we appreciate your comments. And honestly, I apologize that you didn't get the information that you needed to avoid having to go out in the snowstorm tonight.
No, I don't mind.
But let me just share this, if you don't mind. Guy, you can go ahead and sit down, because I'm on a roll now.
You're going to roll?
This, this is the letter that came to me from our then-attorney, Tom Bridges. It's dated December 28. Dear folks, the 10-year special assessment for ambulance service, which the city established in 2010, has expired with the collection of the July 1, 2020 tax billing. If the city desires to continue collecting a special assessment for ambulance service, the legal process to be followed should commence fairly soon, as it is a cumbersome and time-consuming process, and must be completed in time for the assessor to spread the assessment on the July 1, 2020 tax billing. The law has certain requirements that must be followed, which include two public hearings, notice of the public hearings must be mailed and published, the clerk is aware of the timeframes and has been provided with the notices, resolutions, et cetera. The number of years for the assessment must be set by the city council after the second hearing. The assessment can continue to a maximum period of 15 years. The amount of the assessment can increase by 10% when it is reviewed yearly. Briefly, the requirements are as follows. One, the city must have an estimate in writing for public view of the cost of ambulance service for one year, and the anticipated revenue from the special assessment at the time notice of the first hearing is given. Two, the city must set a time for a hearing on the estimated cost and the question of creating a special assessment. And that would happen tonight. We would set another hearing. Three, if the city decides to proceed after the first hearing, the second hearing is set to hear objections to the distribution of the special assessment levy. After this hearing, the council sets the amount of the assessment and sets the number of years. So truly, to say to you, how much is the assessment in a letter that was going out to tell you about a special hearing? We don't know how much. We know what they're asking for, but we don't know. But in light of transparency and hearing both of your comments, perhaps we should have sent a copy of this letter, a copy of this letter, and a copy of the proposed assessment indicating what amounts being asked for and how that would shake out to each household. So knowing that's what people would prefer to have in the future, we'll try to do that. It seemed more cost-effective to just let you know there's a special hearing and come on and find out what it's about. We have it posted at city hall as to what the numbers are. That's what the law required. So we, perhaps in error, stopped at what the law required and didn't say about what would the residents like, not just what does the law require. It does go on in number four in this letter from Mr. Bridges and say, "The city may place the issue on the ballot, but it's not required. The city must place the issue on the ballot if 10% of the owners of the properties assessed petition to have it placed on the ballot." So there were our instructions, and that's what we did. Perhaps we fell short of that, and my apologies to you. We did what we thought was right at the time. There was no intention to mislead or not inform. That's not why we're here. That's not why we come here two nights every month to do what needs to be done to keep the city running. We are honest and open people. Our cell phones are posted on the website. Feel free to give me a call, anytime after 8:00 a.m. and up till 9:00 p.m. And we'll get you what you need, we'll tell you what you need to know. We may have to look it up, but we'll find it. And I'm so glad you both and all of you came tonight. And if there are no other comments, then we will close the hearing based on the fact that we have to set the next hearing date. Am I saying that right, Devin? Because I'm new, I just took office the first of December, so I have to ask everything.
We're going to close the public hearing, and it is under new business to, for the council to consider that, to set the public hearing.
Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing. Now close.
What time is it?
And it is 7:58.
Thank you.
And then further into our business, of new business, that's where we would possibly set a, resolve to set a public hearing to create that new ambulance. So it's an involved process, but we would love to have you come back anytime.
Thank you.
Very.
And you too, Steve.
Pleasure.
Okay, let's see, where were we? John, where'd you go?
I went right.
Okay. So I think we finished up as far as Mr. and Mrs. Fresh. We're going to send that letter out. Were we going to talk any more tonight about the restaurant issue, water issue? Was that going to be a topic of discussion?
Specific or in general?
General, I would say.
Well, I don't really have any more to add to it, other than any changes to billing would have to be done through ordinances based on, I guess it's governor executive orders if he decided to do it like that, if I'm on the right, the same. As far as capacities and change in sewer units, you know, I don't, but it's going to, you know, I mean, we're kind of almost a year into this deal. You know, it wasn't up to me to, you know, change stuff, you know, in the middle of budgets and whatnot, I understand, you know? I do believe there was help out there or funds from the state and federal government levels, but, you know, I think everybody lived through the same thing in various ways, so...
Mindy, John and I met, we discussed Fresh's situation, and we also discussed Amy's diner downtown, because at the last meeting, Mr. Coffey asked for some consideration for a break on their water and sewer at the restaurant. And we, we met for two hours. I mean, we looked at it every way that we could think to look at it. If a restaurant was going to change from having inside seating to take out only, there's provision in the ordinance, because that's billed differently. So if she was going to make that change, her water sewer would be built differently because she wouldn't be charged for inside seating. That's, it's more. But that wasn't the case. I called and talked specifically to Mr. Coffey about that, and that's not what they want to do. If we were to adjust the bill based on 25% capacity, that's something we thought about, talked about, but said, gee whiz, if we made all that change in her billing for only 25% capacity instead of full capacity, then what happens next month when they're 50%? And then what happens in three months when the numbers go up again and they get shut down? Then it has to be changed again. So, you know, I'm not saying it has to be easy. We're certainly willing to work with people. But we said, let's continue to look at the possibilities, maybe, maybe there's something that we can do to help the small, locally-owned restaurants a little bit. So we're continuing to look at that. Again, we have to ask the attorney what we are allowed to do and not allowed to do, so we're looking at that possibility. But I don't know what else we can do. If anybody has suggestions that are specific, send them to me and give me your name and your reply phone number, and I'll, we'll talk. Anybody else have comments about that? Thank you, John. Do we have other department head reports?
I do.
Okay. Police Chief Collins.
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick rundown of recent activity, at least from my perspective. I'm working on the budget, and unfortunately, this is the year that we replace our bullet resistant vests. And I have a preliminary quote right now. There's some details to go over, but we're looking at between $3,000 and $4,000 to replace those. Those are on a five-year cycle, as far as the warranty goes. I personally believe they probably last longer than that, the way they seal up the material now. But anyway, I have been looking at a federal Department of Justice grant. It's called the Bulletproof Vest Program. I don't like saying bulletproof, because it's not bulletproof, they're bullet resistant. So, that being said, the program, the cycle opens in April, I believe, so we can start looking at that. So hopefully, that can take care of most, if not all, of the funding for that, but no guarantees, and after the last year we've all experienced, I'm not going to make any promises about funding for that program. The other thing regarding my budget is, we are up for another vehicle. That should not incur any great additional cost to the budget. It's just part of our monthly fee that we pay. We're on a three-year cycle for a new vehicle, and this is the third year. So it's just time to rotate one out. We can discuss that, we own that vehicle that we would rotate out. So John and I would have a discussion on any public works needs or anything along those lines before we went and auctioned it off. But at this point, the 2014 that I am currently driving would probably be cycled out. We have some options, so we'll see where that goes. Because of that Bulletproof Vest Program, I had to take a look at our use-of-force policy that we have for our officers and how they engage people who don't want to comply with verbal commands. And a part of the new standards that have come out last year, mostly from which President Trump put an executive order out in June requiring some of these new details in the policies, went through and made sure that we had all of that in place for our new policy rollout. We've rolled that out, and so hopefully, we would then be eligible for this federal grant for the Bulletproof Vest. But that took some work, it took some time, and I actually had to forward that to the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police for review, so that they can give it their blessing, and so that they can move it on to the Department of Justice there. What else? Middle of January, we had a truck taken off of Keeney Street, and it was warming in the morning, and he literally watched it pull out of his driveway and go down the street. And we had an officer one block away, and we never saw that vehicle again. It actually drove towards the school. I was getting a little changed, just so you know. I was, my vehicle was up in the air without a drop of oil, and at the time, this car came out. So the timing couldn't have been any worse. That being said, Sergeant Monroe was right around the corner, he circled the block several times, and we never found that vehicle again. The good news is, I walked into a report this morning stating that Grand Lesh had come in contact with the vehicle. The driver decided not to comply with the lights and sirens, took off 100 miles an hour through Grand Lesh, ditched the vehicle, K-9 tracked the subject, found him trying to steal another car. Anyway, he's in custody. We do have the truck secure. We don't have it back yet. We have to process that ourselves tomorrow for evidence. But the good news is, we got the truck back. So hopefully, the owner can have it back by tomorrow. And the previous day, so today's Thursday, I got a phone call Tuesday afternoon, no, I'm sorry, Wednesday afternoon, from Battle Creek, saying they recovered the stolen handgun that we had stolen back in 2019. A resident called, said that gun was in the car, it's not in the car. I don't know why you'd ever keep a gun in a car, or you don't do that, people. Anyway, it was taken, and they recovered it in an incident. They had, I've yet to see their report on that. But anyway, once they go through all their legal proceedings for whatever crimes they have done in Battle Creek, I would imagine that we'll have that gun back to the owner as well. Last but not least, I did want you folks to be aware that the mayor and I have sat down with the president of the Village of Morris and their chief of police a couple of times. It has come to our understanding that while we furloughed our employees citywide through June and July, they did the same. After the end of July, August 1 through January 31, they continued to furlough their employees to save money on the village. Well, due to our mutual aid agreement that we have with them, that was on the backs of our officers, our Perry officers going to the Village of Morris. There was a breakdown of numbers and all of that, but I felt the need to let you know that they did that for the end, through the end of 2020, and they have decided to continue that through March of '21, and they'll review that as a village and see if they want to continue to furlough their employees. At this point, they are furloughing eight hours per week per employee. They only have two. So that's 16 more hours per week that we potentially have the chance to go over there and cover their village. I felt that you folks needed to have that information in front of you. Other than that, I do not have anything further or anything more. Do you have any questions for me?
How do you recommend we handle that, pal?
I'm sorry?
How do you handle, we recommend, how do you recommend that we address the issue for additional hours?
I don't necessarily have a recommendation. We did sit down collectively, the four of us, and talk about some language change potentially in the agreement, so that if they ever change, or we ever change to more of a part-time department, either one of us, that there are provisions that we don't just carry the load, or they carry the load. But defining that is really complicated. I've had a discussion with our city attorney already regarding this, and we come to the same conclusion. We all have come to the same conclusion. We don't know how to define our current status, our current hours covered, our current shifts covered. To say that if it changes from this, then it would be a breach of the agreement, or it would negate the current agreement that we have in place. So I appreciate your question. I don't necessarily have the answer, but I did felt that it was responsible to pass that information on to you folks.
I appreciate you guys extending something, considering.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Committee reports.
Can I do one?
I'm sorry?
Can I do one report? I can't read. Can I do a department report?
Oh, you can, yes. From the department, I write.
Actually, this is John's department, but I do want to, this is, I received information from MDA, and it's regarding the grant that John went after for streets. And John, you can describe, remind them of what I'm talking about better, and also the engineer, if you want to remind them. And this information is going to be coming to you at the next meeting to review, and if possible, to approve the mayor to sign this documentation. I've tonically been working on the resolution that the state is required for you... So, John, do you want to explain the grant that I'm talking about?
Yep. So it's an MDOT grant. It was a pretty, if I say it was simple, I needed a little help to make sure that we capitalized on it. It was 50 cents on the dollar, so, or 50, you know, each one pays 50 cents, you know? So the maximum that we will get out of it is 122,000. So the combined total of the project was 200 and some thousand dollars. Depends on how the bids come in. They're being bid on right now. I think we have one more week of open bid and then that will be done. So I did contact Wolverine Engineering out of Mason because they had helped the Village of Morris, Bancroft, Byron, a lot of local municipalities in Chihuahua County in assisting with this grant. So they did help me fine-tune it and submit it to MDOT. That's, all that stuff has been done, was done last spring, I think, early June, something. It was in last budget, so it was in another budget than what we're in currently. So that stuff, when those contracts, this, there'll be a resolution and contract made with MDOT between the city. And then there'll be a contract made with the paving company and whatnot and all that. And then I will, myself and Wolverine will funnel the information, the paperwork through MDOT in order to receive payment. So it's, from my understanding, it's the simplest grant or going right now for us to get. So we have it, we've been awarded it, we're just working through the process.
Wonderful. Good job. Thank you.
And most of our streets on the passer report, other than a few of them that had been paved in the last year, were in some of the worst conditions. So I picked streets based on where I figured we wouldn't be doing any water main work in the next five to 10 years, hopefully. I can't guarantee that, something may not happen because I've seen municipalities pave a street and two weeks later, dig out a huge section because something happens. So it's just part of the business. So having underground utilities.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Thanks, David. Do we have any committee heads who would like to report on their committees?
Yes, I haven't done a whole lot myself personally with the sign ordinance thing, but thankfully, Larry has put together some things and many support office things, so I'll break through that. The holdup this week is me, so, but we'll continue on that. So we'll have something coming to you soon.
Great.
The Business Affairs and Technology Committee has not had the opportunity to get together yet, but I took the liberty as a chairperson to put together a kind of an operational outline that hopefully we'll adopt as a short-term and next steps to take and hopefully we'll have something to report before the next council meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Parks and Property has set a schedule for a monthly meeting and I know that and put it on the marquee down by Carl's, so, and it had so much information, I had to run three times.
Have to stand there.
Sorry, I got three, three for my phone.
That's great. That's wonderful. Thank you all of you. Mindy, you too, because I know you serve on both, all of those?
Well, I'm blaming him.
Okay.
He did an awesome job putting some stuff together that'll give us something really good to work with.
Great. We can move on then to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we accept and pay the bills as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
I should have finished my sentence, sorry. Moving into old business, we're going to talk about DDA some more. We did get some questions answered. The questions that were posed by Adam and by Mindy, we submitted those to the attorney, to Justin English, and he gave us, I think, some very clear answer. Adam, were you satisfied with the answers you got?
Yeah, I think it definitely, to me, if I'm understanding correctly, definitely would negate or rule out any possibility of that current map that was drawn and was limited to the traditional downtown and that would have to have a confirmation of, what he words as a significant property decline, which if I'm understanding him right, sounds like he moved to go ahead and start some of that.
That's what I read. I read that the downtown would qualify, would be legally sound to say the downtown would qualify for the DDA, but not for for it. That's how I read it.
Yeah, and with also the provisions in addition to that, that geographically, the traditional downtown qualifies, but in addition, the other qualification that has to meet is that there's significant property decline.
Yes.
Upon factual finding. And so that's what's.
That's, I think, yeah, I think that still has to be followed through the assessor, I believe.
Yes, yes. If I understood him, it sounds like he is, where did I read that?
He's requested the information from the assessor and the building inspector corresponding to Mr. Bridges' previous request.
So that's what it sounds like to me. I mean, it would be limited to the traditional downtown and then that's only doable per factual finding that there's property value decline.
Correct.
Mindy, did your question get answered to your satisfaction?
Yes.
Okay. Bob, did you get a copy of this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I think we're at the point where we can discuss whether there's any room in the planning commission's plan for DDA to alter the outline based on the attorney's opinion.
That is very possible. We said that could be done right from the beginning.
Okay. And then would you want to move ahead then and have a workshop based on the new outline? Or do you want just to have CIB? Did I say that right? Okay. CIB, do the tariffs based on that property first? Or do you want to do a workshop first? What would the planning commission like as far as moving forward?
Well, I think that we've got the major area that needs to be covered by the DDA. So that can be done and the map can be drawn up on there directly from what was done before, only just including the downtown area. And, you know, rather than have somebody else do that, the planning commission could do it to reduce the expenses.
Okay.
We've got, we've got the map and we've got the orders. All we need to do is move them.
Okay.
Would it be prudent to talk to, what was his name, Jason, I think?
Jason, Justin.
Justin at CIB and see if his fees would decrease because the size of the DDA is probably half?
Well, I'd like to, I might ask him if the, if the size of it would alter the fee. Correct. He said, yes, it would.
Okay.
But it's not, he said it wouldn't be that significant amount. Now, if we take out, because we're not talking a whole number of properties that would be taken out because there's some large areas like McDonald's and the truck stop and so on up there, to take those out is just one, one parcel. Where if you had a row of houses, you got to take each one out. So, you know, he said it would reduce it if we reduced the size of it, but he said it would not be a significant amount.
I'd like to, when we get to that point, a new number before we commit to, because if I remember right, it was $13,000, $14,000 for his fee?
Well, I think that that, that fee is going to stay the same in there because that's after the boundaries are drawn.
So there's an initial fee of the 18, but the 3,600 is what was being proposed and which is on your agenda tonight. And that was, CBI was going to take the, the actual parcels in these boundaries that was an example that Mr. Aki gave you. And he was going to give you a 20-year spread, working with Joanne.
What would, what would be, he would just work with the numbers that we're going to say, this is our boundaries, he's going to work with those numbers. That fee won't change, but the overall fee may change.
That could change, in my opinion, if the boundaries change, that 3,600 might be reduced because there will be less work into that. So there's two steps to this. It would, council had agreed that they kind of wanted to know how much would, revenues would, would actually come in from the taxes for the DDA in 20 years according to the boundary. So if you're changing the boundary, there's a good chance that that initial work might decrease, but I would have to agree with Mr. Aki, the whole proposal, if council would decide to go with CIB as the people to do the, the process of becoming a DDA, that will, that should not decrease.
I understand.
All the steps are pretty much the same.
Exactly.
Could I say something?
Absolutely.
Personally, I do not feel we should do, go any further until we find out from the attorney if there is deterioration in the downtown. That we do have some information from three years ago, but myself, I have to see how it stands right now to even consider the downtown being a DDA.
The letter from the attorney, Justin English, dated February 2nd. He's at the end of his letter after interpreting opinions. Please note that I've also requested information from the assessor and building inspector corresponding to Mr. Bridges' previous request updated from 2018 until present to determine whether any portions of the business district would qualify under Section 303 of Treaty General Opinion 6558 and 6335, and that's concerning property value deterioration.
Yes.
So, so certainly, that sounds like it's in process.
Yes, they have both submitted their information to the city attorney.
But I just, I don't care to do any more planning until we get that answer. And I also definitely would want that workshop with the every, every property and the DDA boundary invited to attend. And I would need to hear some commitment from those people to serve on the board. It's, I feel they have to be part of the board.
That's a flexible thing, so certainly, yeah.
I would agree with Mindy. The other piece, I don't care, not Mindy, the other piece that I would like to see and better understand, and I struggled with trying to find any information on it, is what grants, because to me, that's probably the largest potential plus revenue stream that whether it's the DDA or the city has, without just moving money from one bucket to another, if you will. And I'm still struggling with what grants are we not eligible for consideration as a result of not having a DDA? In other words, you know, to me, that's another germaid piece. If we can properly equip ourselves to go after some grants that we're not doing today without the presence of a DDA, it weighs heavily in my mind in terms of the pros and cons, even with a smaller district, as to whether it's a good business decision for us.
Yeah, it was the second, all of that, I think, Mindy, you're on it, because really, I mean, even at this point, there's still a qualifying piece that we don't have. I mean, even though that, based on the other parameters of the law, the downtown would qualify for, however, there's still this piece that must fit and that's the property deterioration. And until they say that, I mean, if that's not in place, then that's, we don't even qualify for. So in addition to that, I'm with you too, you know, you'd want to see, because at the start of this, I was under the impression that there was grants that we do not qualify for unless we have the DDA. And everything I have seen simply does not bear that out.
Exactly.
And, and that's not to say that I, that's not to say that I'm right in saying that. But if there's, if I'm hearing Larry right, but if that is the case, then I'd like to see those grants or see other municipalities who have gotten them, what the criteria was and how it's limited. But that also doesn't mean even if we don't qualify for this, I still would say we should still do something for downtown.
Yes.
It may be a different route, so.
Something else that keeps sticking with me is CIB and Row Engineering both have commented about if we had a DDA, we'd qualify for all these grants. And if you don't have a DDA, you don't qualify for all these grants. But they can't name the grants. We've asked and we don't get that answer. And I don't understand why they don't know when it's a tool they're using to push selling a DDA.
And you, you could be right, but I, but I have to say this. When Justin was here from CBI, I always say it backward. When Justin was here, we asked him that question. Must you be a DDA in order to get the grants that are out there? And he said, no. He said, no, you do not have to be a DDA to get grants. There are many grants that are available to lots of places. And to cite what grants? They change all the time. You know, grants, there's a bucket of money for a specific event, project, whatever you want to call it. People apply for it, when it's used up, it's gone. And then there's another grant, and then there's another grant. So some of them are for sidewalk improvements, some are for street improvements, some are for lighting improvements. I mean, there's a lot of different grants and they change all the time. So for them to say a specific grant, I, I can understand that. But he did say, no, you do not have to be a DDA to get a grant. But then Justin Horvath said, if you have a DDA in place, then you have the information that most places that you're applying for a grant to will need. And you can put that application in quicker, faster, more efficiently and be more likely to get the money because it's first come, first served. When it's gone, it's gone. So that was my understanding. Bob, did you understand that differently?
No, but from the private sector, to look at municipalities and so on and so forth, if the city of Perry is not going to do something for their businesses, then the state is not going to do anything. Yes, you can put the grants together, but if you look in, in that Michigan, I sent it to you last time, MML, if you look at that, they list the grants that are given. And after, a lot of them, it says DDA or Main Street, either one.
I think the key to the, the DDA is not required. Now, I'd be the first to say there, we should update the master plan of the city. Because it's, and that's, that's what they want, saying that's the qualifier that the DDA brings into place for these grants. And so if you have that done, you still qualify, is my understanding. If you have an updated, active, progressing, making, taking action towards fulfilling that master plan is what they're looking for.
Which is what, as I understand, that some of the steps that you go through in developing the DDA force you to, to do that structure of a vibrant business plan as opposed to the DDA necessarily itself, which is not, it's driven some behavior.
But I think Bob's right, though. They do want to see, any, any place that's going to give a grant, wants to see that the city and whoever it is that's asking for the grant are working together. You know, if they think it's just. You know, if they think it's just a fly-by-night group of people asking for the grant, there's less policing, if you will, of how that money's used if the city and that group are not working together. So I, I think that's maybe where that, that, it's not a requirement, but that preference comes in.
Well, Bob, you told me that Justin Horvath has told you that you have to have a DDA in order to qualify for these grants.
He did say that to me.
So...
But I don't know, you know, like the mayor said, I don't know what grants it is. And I do not think that the state would put in a requirement for this grant to have a DDA. It would be one of those things that's inferred underneath it.
Well, it, it bothers me when they say these things to individuals like Bob. And then come here and they say, oh, no, not quite. That bothers me.
I understand.
And, um, I don't know. I keep looking, I looked at the, the site that Justin Sprague mentioned. It said nothing about a DDA. So I, I keep looking for it, but...
Well, shall we, as a council, say, let's move ahead and get this information that the city attorney is working on to determine the, the deterioration? But do we want a new boundary definition now? Or do you want to wait and get that information and then request it? Or can we work on them both at the same time?
I mean, I don't mind if we're going to both sometimes, it's not going to cost us anything. I, I do know this, you know, Bob, if you, you know, it, probably not, if you do, if you have an electronic, you can move this line pretty easy. However, I hate to put you out doing any work until you know anything, because, I mean, if he comes back and says, there's not deterioration of property values, you don't qualify, then there's nothing, I mean, the discussion's muted at that point.
But as Justin Sprague mentioned the last meeting, it's not only the external, it's the infrastructure in the town and the buildings around there also. That could be deteriorating at the point that the property values might be going up, but the inside is running out.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, I, I can't, I'm not qualified to make that kind of determination. That's why the city pays the attorney. So, I mean, if he comes back and says, you can't do this, or you leave, I can't defend this in court, then my decision has to be made based on what, what he's telling me. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if, if he comes back and says, you know, if you don't qualify on this basis and I can't defend this in court, I don't mean it. To me, the point of view at that point.
And I've always been at the understanding that it's based on your, your SEV. Is that wrong?
Your what?
Your SEV, your...
What's based on it?
If there's deterioration or increase in value.
Well, you can have an increase in value just because of the economic conditions. And yet, the inside of the building can be not good. And that would be Leland's area or somebody else's area to determine what's needed inside the building, or maybe John, you know, the, the pipes and so on and so forth. I, I'm not qualified to do that either. But if you just base it strictly on the SEV, you know, property values can go up all the time. And I'm sure that building across the street from City Hall and the Wasso, I'm sure that that SEV has continued to go up, and yet, properties continue to go down.
Are you talking about the Matthews Building? The one they've been putting a new roof on? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, one of the roofs fell in next to the river.
Yeah.
Well, still, even at that, my understanding is that's how the laws run. I mean, because that's, it is based on the SEV. And so that's, that's what, in my understanding, is that is what determines a factual finding of property. You're relevant what the condition of the property is. If this county assessment is doing that, then the, I would suggest the building, they just go have a meeting with them and throw a fit about their taxes. Because if that's the case, then there's something, there's a disconnect there somewhere. But if the SEVs are increasing, then we don't even meet the criteria legally.
Well, if you read the Bridges report that English had a lot of that, I read that it, also not just SEV, but what things have been sold for. So if things have been sold for less than what their assessed value was, that has a criteria, or if they were doubled, what they were, you know, those things. So I agree that we need to not go forward until we get the information from the attorney on the assessed values, unless Bob can do the borders. And I know he's leaving soon for a few weeks, so that's be fine. But I don't think we can move forward with any kind of decision on the workshop or hiring anyone until we have that last piece of puzzle.
Just to maybe put a little bit of light on this, I'll get my old realtor hat out of the closet here. And I'm sorry, but I'm roasting hot. In two thousand seven, eight, nine, when the bottom fell out of the real estate market here in Michigan, many people who owned, and I'll stick with the businesses downtown, those buildings downtown were upside down. They owed more money than the building could sell for. And some of them by as much as half. But did their SEV change? That takes two years to catch up. So probably not. So if you just looked at the SEV on the report on file downstairs, that probably didn't reflect a decrease. But having something on the market for the better part of a year and a half for, under what you owed on it, meaning it's probably twenty percent less than what you paid for it on the market price and it still won't sell, that's a direct reflection of deterioration of property value. Even though the building was in good shape, even though it then maintained and taken care of and everything worked well, the market was not going to support a sale price anywhere near what was owed on the building. And it wasn't just that one building that I'm thinking of. There, there were many. And there were homes, obviously, too. And that's why we had so many foreclosures on the market, because people couldn't sell them for what they owed. So, I mean, that's part of that whole process. Because then, when things did start selling again, they didn't jump right back up to two thousand three values, which was the highest we had ever. It's taking a while to get back up there. So if you say, well, is the value deteriorated? Well, the question is, since when? Is it deteriorated since two thousand three? Yes, everything has. Even though we're seeing really high sale prices now in homes, we're still not seeing them in businesses. And that has to do with the fact that people that want to buy them can't get mortgages unless they've got fifty percent down, used to be twenty, because all those laws have changed. So it has a whole lot more than just what the SEV says, or just what condition physically the building is in. So there's a lot of stuff that has to go with that. So am I hearing you correctly say that you would like to wait till we get this information that's referenced in the letter from the attorney? Bring that back to council, we'll talk about it then. By then, Bob will be back from warmer climates. And then we'll meet again, put you back on the agenda once we get that stuff. And you'll be available by email and by phone and stuff, so we can keep in touch.
And if we just use the boundaries that the attorney addressed that he thought would qualify, I think that's good enough for that, for that question.
Yes.
Correct. See, we need to answer two things there. One, the boundaries that we have set, were they, were they legal and important to this? No, they weren't. You know, you can't have a residential corridor to connect two business districts together.
I mean, I mean the boundaries that the attorney said, the downtown area that he possibly could qualify.
Yes.
Those are the boundaries I meant.
That we would use.
We would use rather than making a new map right now.
Yes, that's my, yes. Now, he's got to determine whether he's saying it's deteriorating per whatever the law defines that.
Yeah.
So.
So under Old Business, we discussed creating a DDA. We deferred any scheduling of a workshop and we are not approving, but simply tabling any discussion of approval of, of the DDA based on estimate of tax capture.
Would you like to table that to write off or no action taken and let these items roll to the next agenda?
Let's do no action taken, and then once we get the information we need, we'll put it back on the agenda. Thank you. Is that satisfactory with everybody? Yes. All right, moving on to New Business. We have a possible approval of BSA training, and I might let Devin just tell you what that's all about.
You met Leanne, she's here. If you have any questions on what she's learning in her third week in, you can ask her. But this is a key part that is planned when we have somebody coming in, learning a particular area. It is three days of training, and she will get the benefits of general ledger and the tax program. I might request other BSNA programs, but that is further down the line, meaning anywhere from eight months to a year before I would give her that proper training on that. So I'm asking you to consider approving this training to help her learn all the ins and outs of these programs while Joanne is teaching her thirty years of experience.
Question, just for clarification, Devin?
Yes.
Is this for one-on-one training? Because down in the fine print, it talks about, it's been more than fifteen to ten Bs, which would lead me to believe, do we have anyone else that should be considered if it's a group setting, if you will?
It's a group effort that they, that BSNA is putting in. I want to say it was by, one is virtual and the individual is, so there's, do you want to step up and, and you can explain what they told you on the three-day training?
Good evening, my name is Leanne Colomore. I believe my title is Deputy Treasurer, Deputy Clerk at this point. The BSNA training is going to be for three days, and it is going to be one-on-one. They will call me and then we're going to work together. And I think all three of those days, that's how we will be working it. I don't think at this point there's any other way that we could do that, like for group setting and stuff like that. I just, I think it's easier for them to walk me through it. They had suggested an additional day if I needed it, but I told them that, let's just get through these first three days of training, and then if I needed additional work, then we could go through that. On the computer, there is an option for me to go ahead, and it has everything listed. It gives pictures, it kind of walks me through what I need to know, and so I am also looking at that as well. But it would be nice to have an overview of the general ledger and of the tax, of everything that I will be working with. It'll be more, they're going to give me a lot of information, and I think that would be very helpful to see how it all kind of pieces together.
I was really questioning the value of the training, it was more that, is there anyone else? Because I took from this, oh, the inference that that's not a per-person number, for example, if there was someone additional...
That is, and that's two programs. So the eight fifty would have been divided, because when we went through this with Shirley, it was, I want to say it was four hundred dollars per program, because we had her go through two programs of the training that goes into it. And they went to class, and Joanne, and we sent Joanne and Shirley to class, and they were four hundred each, and this is two programs. So, no, this isn't including more people. This is per person. And then this, what you're seeing here is for the appropriate pricing, just to make sure.
Okay, per person, then. So if we had a second person to vote, go up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the BSA general ledger program training for the new employee and also authorize payment for the amount not to exceed twenty-five fifty to BSNA.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve funding the training for Leanne for the BSNA training in the amount cited. All those in favor, bow aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passed. The next item under New Business is the possible adoption of Poverty Exemption Guidelines Resolution. This is something that is a fairly regular event, if I understand correctly. And again, Devin has more knowledge about this, certainly, way more than I do. But for them to, for an individual to qualify for an exemption on their taxes, for example, they have to meet these guidelines. And so Steve Schweiker, our assessor, has something to work from. When somebody applies for that, he needs us to approve these guidelines for him to use. So when you've had a chance to look that through, if somebody is...
I move that we accept and adopt the twenty twenty-one Poverty Exemption Guidelines Resolution as presented.
Second.
Larry, Mindy, or Adam?
Larry, led, who's second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the guidelines as presented. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passed. Next, under New Business, we have possible adoption of the resolution to allow taxpayer to protest to the Board of Review by letter, as opposed to having to attend the meeting.
I have a question on that one. Are you going to set up a Zoom meeting for people who are going to protest in addition to sending them a letter, I mean, sending their letter in, or?
Board of Review will be meeting up here in person.
Okay, so if they, they can choose to send a letter or they can come and meet in front?
Correct. That's what I, that's what I have been told.
Okay.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution presented, which will allow taxpayers to protest the Board of Review by letter. Second.
The motion seconded that we accept this resolution regarding authorizing resident taxpayer to protest by letter. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passed. Now, the next item of discussion regarding zoning violation recommendations. This is what I brought up earlier when I was trying to kill time before the special assessment thing. Leland had given me that proposal, and we are still in contact with the attorney regarding that. So I'll just clarify, that's what that is. We will say no action on this until we get more information from the attorney. So moving on to the next, under New Business, possible resolution to set public hearing to create a new ambulance special assessment.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution presented, which sets a public hearing on the fourth day of March, twenty twenty-one, at seven fifteen. Do you hear comment whether the city should create a special assessment district for ambulance service?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we set the hearing to create a new special ambulance assessment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that has passed as well. Do we have any other business that may come before the council tonight?
I do. I've been, I think in one of the first, first or second meetings that we were at, I mentioned the council, I was... at, I mentioned the council, I was working on a couple things. One was radar detected, speed limit sign that would tell you the speed. I've subsequently been in contact with MDOT. We finally, he finally sent me an email with their guidelines, and I gave, handed it out to everybody, and then I also had a conversation with Chief Box today, and he feels that we don't really have an issue, and it's, MDOT frowns on having those kinds of signs anyways. There's a rock, there's an end around, a wink and a nod, and there's ways to do it, but, and my discussion with Chief, that if we're going to spend the money, and it'd be roughly $10,000, he'd rather see that be put in his budget, and I agree with him. So if we're going to spend that kind of money, let's give it to the police department to try to do something in that regard. Not saying I'm giving it to you yet, but... The other thing I'm working on, and I'm still working on, is proposing maybe to move the crosswalk from Horace to Ralph, Rolfe, sorry, and putting up a switch one, so you hit the button, it's animated?
Oh, yeah.
Instead of the flashing things that we have now. Now, that has to go, I have to go in front of the school board and ask them if they see the need. I've witnessed people pressing down their board, my conversation with Chief Box, he has witnessed the same thing. So to me, it makes more sense. That is a lot less precarious for the MDOT than anything else, so I will continue. I was hoping Terry was here, because I was going to talk to him about the city, I know he's on school board, or he was, so.
Any other business? Counsel, anything you want to discuss? Larry, what's on your mind?
Pardon?
I said, got anything on your mind you want to discuss?
No, I'm good tonight, thank you.
How about you, Mindy?
I'm good.
Are you? David?
I'm good.
Bob?
I said my piece moved, I don't thank you.
All right. How about you? You got anything, Devin?
Is there anybody else who wants to speak in public comment?
Do we have anybody who'd like to speak in public comment time? Yes?
Yeah, sure, school's canceled for tomorrow, so, sorry, the ambulance is going to be running. Got to show you my smile. So my kid said, you get a snow day, and I don't get a snow day. How come I have to go work every day? You get off the phone, but I got to work every day. School's canceled for two inches of snow? Oh, my goodness. They sent it out about 20 minutes ago. We used to walk to school uphill both ways, a big bit in my pocket, keep my hands warm, and that was my life.
And you didn't have boots, right?
No, no, I had boots. That was my dad's saying, anyway, so.
I just have one other comment about the DDA.
Yes.
Perry Council has a DDA. The way I understand it works, and I don't want to give you the big discussion about this, is that the DDA caps any additional tax dollars after it's been spent at all, or established. So... Tax increases, yes. Anyone that collects taxes within that DDA can opt out, like the community district library, us.
Or the number.
For the fire service, we get a millage. We're separate, so we would be allowed out of that, that, so we would still continue to get the DDA movement.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
That's what I'm understanding.
Probably won't do that. But if you were to include the corner, I have time to, because that's where all the cash cow is all there. I got to have that money.
Anybody else? Any agenda items we need to inform Devin of before the next meeting, get in touch with her, if you do, because this meeting is adjourned at 8:51.